We're ready to start.
Quiet on the floor, please. Good morning and welcome to today's New York City Council hearing for the Subcommittee on Zoning and Franchises. At this time, we ask that you silence all electronic devices, and at no time is anyone to approach today. If you would like to sign up for in-person testimony or have any other questions during the hearing, please see the Sergeant-at-Arms. Chair, we're ready to begin.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the meeting of the Subcommittee on Zoning and Franchises. I'm Councilmember Kevin Riley, Chair of the Subcommittee, and I'm joined today by Councilmember Shulman Hudson. Today, we are scheduled to hear one hearing concerning the residential rezoning proposal known as 962-972 Franklin Avenue. Before opening this hearing, I will first go over the hearing procedures. This meeting is being held in hybrid format. Members of the public who wish to testify may testify in person or through Zoom. Members of the public wishing to testify remotely may register by visiting the New York City Council's website at www.council.nyc.gov/landuse to sign up. If you are here in person, please see one of the Sergeant-at-Arms prepare and submit a speaker's card. Members of the public may also view a live stream broadcast of this meeting at the Council's website. When you are called to testify and you are online, you will remain muted until I recognize you to speak. Please take a moment to check your device and confirm that your mic is on before you begin speaking. We will limit public testimony to two minutes per witness. Members of the public can also submit written testimony to the following email address: landusetestimony@council.nyc.gov. Written testimony may be submitted up to three days after the hearing is closed. Please indicate the LU number and/or the project name in the subject line of your email. We request that the witnesses joining us remotely remain in the meeting until excused by myself, as Councilmembers may have questions. Lastly, for everyone attending today's meeting, this is a government proceeding, and decorum must be observed at all times. Members of the public are asked not to speak during the meeting unless you are testifying. The witness table is reserved for people who are called to testify, and no video recording or photography is allowed from the witness table. Further, members of the public may not present audio or video recording as testimony, but may submit transcripts of such recordings to the Sergeant-at-Arms for inclusion in the hearing record. We've been joined by Councilmember Abreu and remotely by Councilmember Moya. I will now open the public hearing on LU's 161, 162, and 163 relating to the 962-972 Franklin Avenue rezoning proposal located in Councilmember Hudson's district. This rezoning proposal has received a lot of attention because applicant is seeking to build a new residential building close to the greenhouses in the Brooklyn Botanical Gardens. The first version of this proposal was disapproved by the City Planning Commission back in 2021 because the proposal would have cast a significant shadow on the greenhouses. Applicant has since changed its proposal and is seeking to build a development that will rise to about 14 floors. The development will contain approximately 475 apartments, of which about 119 will be permanently affordable. Although CPC did approve the second proposal, CPC modified it because the proposed development would still cast a shadow on the greenhouses. Today, we will discuss whether CPC's modification is sufficient to protect the greenhouses. For anyone wishing to testify on these items remotely, if you have not already done so, you must register now. You may do that by visiting the Council's website at council.nyc.gov/landuse. And once again, for anyone with us in person, please see one of the sergeants to prepare and submit a speaker's card. If you prefer to submit written testimony, you can always do so by emailing it to landusetestimony@council.nyc.gov. We've also joined by Councilmember Carr, and I would like to yield the floor to Councilmember Hudson for our opening remarks.
Thank you, Chair Riley, for the opportunity to make a statement on the 962-972 Franklin Avenue rezoning. First, I'd like to read a brief excerpt from "What If We Get It Right: Visions of Climate Futures" by Ayana Elizabeth Johnson, who's a world-renowned marine biologist, policy expert, writer, native Brooklynite, and constituent. And I quote, "We find ourselves in a time of reckoning, at an inflection point for humanity. What we will inflect toward is not clear. It has not yet been determined how much global temperature will increase, how much sea levels will rise, how we will adapt to the inevitable and prevent the worst, or how we will treat each other amidst it all. Set aside your resignation and nihilism. There is a wide range of possible futures. Peril and possibility coexist. A few things feel clear about this world we must build together. There can be enough for each of us. There can be a home for each of us. There can be a role for each of us. The imperative is transformation, and the goal is to thrive. Even if that's all we know for sure, it's enough to get started. Now, will we get it right? I have no idea. It's a long shot, but we could." Good morning, members of the Subcommittee and members of the public. My name is Crystal Hudson, and I'm the Councilmember representing the 35th District in Brooklyn, where this project is located. I'm sure everyone has followed this project and its various iterations over the years, but I want to speak specifically about where we are as of this moment. As approved by the City Planning Commission, the applicant could build an 11-story mixed-use building with 355 residential units, including a range of 91 to 106 affordable units with ground-floor commercial space. Even with this modification, I continue to have concerns about the proposal. Throughout this process, I've made my position clear. We must ensure that unique open spaces and cultural assets like the Brooklyn Botanic Garden are not unduly harmed by shadows from development. And the shadows we speak of are not simply shadows that reduce the light beaming into one's bedroom window for a few more minutes on most days during the winter. The shadows we speak of would impact the light required for the Brooklyn Botanic Garden to quite literally provide the very plants for a garden that not only Brooklynites enjoy, but for one that is treasured by the entire city. Any development in this area must prevent harmful shadows from being cast onto the garden, and while the applicant has proposed changes that would lessen the impact and duration of shadows on the garden, I still have concerns. Additionally, the applicant is requesting that the Council revise the required MIH affordability on the site, which would minimize the number of units priced below market rate for those in greatest need. Outstanding issues remain concerning the detrimental effect of shadows cast onto the Brooklyn Botanic Garden, lack of community services, and the number and depth of affordable units under MIH. I look forward to the applicant's presentation and hearing the public testimony on this rezoning, and thank you again, Chair Riley, for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Councilmember Hudson. I will now call the applicant panel for this proposal, which consists of David Rosenberg and William Wallace IV. And also Kyle Bragg. Counsel, can you please administer the affirmation?
Please raise your right hand and state your name for the record.
David Rosenberg.
William Wallace IV.
Could you please turn on your mic?
William Wallace IV.
Kyle Bragg.
Do you swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth in your testimony here today and in response to Councilmember questions?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. For the viewing public, if you need a accessible version of this presentation, please send an email request to landusetestimony@council.nyc.gov. And now the applicant team may begin. I just ask that you please restate your name and organization for the record. You may begin.
Good morning, Chair Riley, Councilmember Hudson, members of the committee. My name is David Rosenberg, counsel with Rosenberg &amp; Estes, and the attorney for this project. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to present the 962-972 Franklin Avenue rezoning today. If approved, this rezoning would facilitate the first residential union BFO project in New York City. This is a win-win for New York. Hundreds of new homes, including affordable homes, hundreds of new good-paying union jobs, and all of it supporting union pension funds. Next slide, please. Just giving an overview of the development. As modified by the City Planning Commission, would yield approximately 284,947 square feet of mixed use, 355 dwelling units, of which 106 would be permanently income-restricted per the MIH workforce option through a modification that we are requesting from the City Council, approximately 8,500 square feet of retail space, parking for 20% of market rate units per a special permit, which would result in a 10-story building with a step-down in the rear along a 15-degree plane per a zoning text amendment that's proposed with this. And of course, this would be union-built, union-financed, and union-operated. I'm sorry. Skip two slides, please. It's an overview of the zoning actions. This would be a rezoning from the existing R6A zoning district to an R70C24 district, as well as a text amendment to designate MIH for Option 1, as well as the workforce option, specifically the workforce option being a modification requested now from the City Council that was not before the City Planning Commission. Would also include a special permit to reduce parking to facilitate affordable housing, and a text amendment to modify height and setback regulations for developments east of the Brooklyn Botanic Garden on the immediate block that utilize the MIH height allowances. Next slide, please. This is the first time that this council is being asked to approve a union BFO project and has the potential to set a new standard for responsible housing development in the city. Looking at this project, with the rezoning, we get 355 units of mixed-income housing, 106 of which would be income-restricted pursuant to workforce housing in perpetuity, binding enforcement mechanisms to protect the Brooklyn Botanic Garden from shadow impacts, developer-funded improvements for both the Brooklyn Botanic Garden and for the Jackie Robinson Playground across the street, and would be fully-union. As we've said, without this rezoning, the future of this, much as like what happened to the site immediately adjacent to this, is market-rate luxury housing, likely condos, without any mandated affordability, without any developer-funded public improvements, without any guaranteed union jobs, and no protections for the Brooklyn Botanic Garden from new shadows. Next slide, please. During a robust public review process, we introduced a novel text amendment that would create unprecedented protection for the Brooklyn Botanic Garden through fully enforceable height restrictions. We further committed to mitigation measures that protect neighboring buildings from construction impacts, committed more than $1 million worth of capital improvements to the Jackie Robinson Playground, and agreed to provide $500,000 to the Brooklyn Botanic Garden to develop artificial lighting systems and other infrastructure improvements at the direction of the garden's expert staff. Each of these commitments today are recorded against these properties and are fully binding and enforceable against the developer, subject only to the City Council's final approval of this rezoning. Despite this, and despite all these commitments and the desperate need for new housing and good jobs in Crown Heights, the City Planning Commission chose to further reduce the heightened density at the behest of the Brooklyn Botanic Garden. Next slide, please. On paper, these changes reduced the overall unit count by about 25%, or 120 units, from 475 to 355. But in practice, this reduction makes it impossible for us to deliver on the promises we've made to the community during ULRP. The math simply does not add up. Since the CPC vote, we've worked tirelessly with our partners to find a way forward that could bridge the gap between maximum affordability and project viability. We are grateful to the AFL-CIO Housing Investment Trust for their support throughout this process, but especially for stepping up with unprecedented investment to get us closer to meeting the project's original goals. We also need the City Council to step in. While we had initially proposed mapping MIH Option 1, we are now asking the Council to approve the rezoning with the workforce housing option. This option would ensure that 30% of the units, approximately 106 in all, would be permanently income-restricted for low- and middle-income families. It would also ensure that these units would be available to the hard-working people who are building, operating, and investing their pension funds in this project. We initially proposed MIH Option 1 because we felt it struck the right balance between much-needed low-income housing, as well as a strong workforce housing component. However, as a result of City Planning's decision to reduce the density by 25%, the project is simply not viable with anything but the workforce housing option. Even the most well-intentioned project will not be built if it cannot be financed. Before I start taking questions from members of the committee, I want to make one point about the Brooklyn Botanic Garden's public request of this council that to reduce the heightened density of the project even further. Now, as was quoted in this morning's New York Times, "The Brooklyn Botanic Garden is a nonprofit that is not in the business of addressing the city's housing crisis." And they might be fine with a development here of 165, 168 condos. But the City Council's in a different spot. We're in a housing crisis with a city of a 1.41% vacancy rate and a desperate need for housing of all types across the city. Now, while the garden's request to reduce this from a 15-degree angle to a 10-degree angle, an R70 to an R7A, sounds like a minor change, the proposal in reality would reduce density by 36 units, more than 10%, on top of what has already been reduced by the City Planning Commission, and would effectively guarantee that the site is developed as market-rate condos with non-union labor. Now, publicly, the garden has couched this request under the guise of further mitigating shadow impacts, but we believe that facts matter. Looking at the single most impacted resource that has been brought up again and again by the garden during public review, the Hardy Plant Nursery Yard, where the garden cultivates many of its sensitive plant collections. And you look at it on the most impacted day, which is the June 21 Analysis Day, which is when there's the most sunlight, the difference between the R7D that was approved by the City Planning Commission and the R7A that the Botanic Garden is now requesting is a grand total of three minutes between the shadow impacts of the R7D versus the R7A. We have already committed to $1.5 million for artificial lighting and other infrastructure improvements at the garden. As between three minutes of sunlight or 355 new mixed-income homes for New Yorkers, or three minutes of sunlight versus hundreds of good-paying union jobs, we think the choice is clear. And with that, I'm happy to take questions from the committee.
Thank you. I'm going to ask a few questions, then I'm going to turn it over to Councilmember Hudson to ask some questions as well, then see if the committee members have any questions. The proposal that was accepted by CPC is based on the revision you made after certifying your application and after Community Board 9's review. Have you kept in touch with Community Board 9, and have you received feedback from them based on your revisions?
Yes. So, to walk back about the design, when we first presented the original R8A development scenario with the step-down design, we had first presented that to Community Board 9 in April, pre-certification. At the time, as we said to the community board, we were still in discussions with City Planning about what a legal mechanism might look like that would lock in that building massing with the step-down. At the time, the intention was to do it through a restrictive declaration as part of the parking reduction special permit that is also part of this application. As we got closer to certification and City of yes was certified into public review, that avenue became impossible. And so, the project that was certified by the City Planning Commission showed a full build-out of the R8A massing in the back, even though we had already shown the community board that we wanted to do this step-down with the step-down massing. At the time, we had not found a mechanism with City Planning that we could lock in that mechanism. During the public review process and through discussions, we introduced this idea of a text amendment that introduces the solar plane that you can see on the image on this slide. And we took that, we modeled that from the way that zoning treats the areas around airports. That creates this kind of an inclined plane that sets firm height limits, no permitted obstructions, no funny business about what can and cannot do it. It's an absolute height limit that the way we proposed it guarantees that the garden maximizes sunlight and also does not sacrifice density. And ultimately, at the City Planning Commission, they modify the angle a bit, which has the effect on density, but it has the effect of allowing sunlight to go through. But throughout the process, we've been in touch with the community board about this even before certification, is that this was the building we wanted to get to, and we would figure out what the mechanism would be to get there.
You made a very public threat to withdraw the application and build as-of-right unless your revised proposal is going to be approved. Now that you are before us, are you committed to pursue this application? If not, why are you presenting this project to us today?
So, Mr. Chairman, I don't think it was a threat. It was a statement of just the project reality, which is that, you know, my clients as developers and with investors have a responsibility to ensure that the equity that they have in this and all the work that they've put in is protected, and that the project that was approved by the City Planning Commission is not viable, is not financeable, and then puts the property in a worse position than the as-of-right development would be. And what we said at the time, right, separate from how media may have reported it, is that absent a significant change to the project that let us find a way to make the project work, we would be left with no choice but to withdraw. But immediately after the City Planning Commission vote, we got together with our partners, with the AFL-CIO Housing Trust, to see if there is a way that we could make this work. And we believe that there is a way to do that. That is through mapping the workforce housing option on this project, which is why we're here requesting that the council modify the project to do the workforce housing project. We've been at this now in different iterations, as you mentioned in your opening remarks, for, you know, over six years at this point. I think the development team's commitment to this project is clear, but it needs to be able to work. And after looking at it every which way, we believe the workforce housing option with the R7D that was approved out of the City Planning Commission can work, and that is a project that we would pursue.
Have you filed any plans to date with DOB to build under as-a-right scenario?
So, plans were filed back in 2022 to install a single footing, to preserve the project's eligibility for the old 421A program, which has been done. No other plans, the plans that are there for the as-of-right building are still under plan review and have been for a couple of years.
So, the plans that are currently filed was because of the old 421 tax abatement program?
Yes.
No other reason why? And you guys are fully committed to going forward with this plan today pending approval?
Absolutely. I think Mr. Wallace--
Yes, we are. And I just want to be clear, because many times, statements can be misinterpreted. William Wallace IV from the Continuum Company, no threat here at all. You know, if I warn you about a Category 4 hurricane, it's not to threaten you, it's to protect you from the consequences. We had two sites originally proposed for development that would have had a 50-50, no gentrification, mixed-income development. The other site is now being built, as predicted, as a non-union luxury condo. With the restrictions placed at the last CPC certification, it is impossible without the modification from the original MH1 to Option 4 workforce to move forward. And what we wanted to everyone know, we can't do this. You know, the good news is that we finally have union pension funds investing in affordable housing in New York. The bad news is that we finally have union pension funds. This is not play money. This is real money. This is your retirement income. So, if it doesn't pencil out, we have to withdraw. We don't want to. Been at this forever. I had a full head of hair when I started this project. We want this to move forward, and we want to be reasonable. We made an 82% reduction from the original piece. We further reduced it. We tried to get all of the shadows out of the way. We now left with something that doesn't work without workforce housing, and now we're being asked by BBG to even have further reduction. So, all we're saying is with that, it's going to be an impossible project to pencil out.
Well, first, I need you to present evidence that you had a full head of hair when this project was happening, before we could approve anything. But going into the workforce housing, why are you requesting workforce housing now when it wasn't proposed during the earlier stages of this ULRP project?
So, at the earlier stages, with 475 units, we looked at MIH Option 1. We looked at the demographics for the area, the income numbers, and that MIH Option 1 allowed us a good mix of both having affordable units at 40% AMI, a little bit, right, still, I believe the mix was at some at 80% AMI or 100, and then some of it at workforce at 130% AMI, which would also meet the goals for us here, which is also that the unions that are investing in this project, the building, should be able to have their members eligible for the housing. That mix worked with MIH Option 1, which is why it penciled out with 475 units at R8A density. The City Planning Commission's reduction from R8A to R7D reduced the density by 25%, which is, and that's 25% purely at the unit count, not in terms of the value of units. Bringing down a 14-story building to a 10-story building has a tremendous impact on the value, where MIH Option 1, just simply, it's not that we don't want to do it. We still think that that kind of housing is important, but it just does not work at this project anymore.
What happens if the council does not map the workforce housing option?
Then, we would likely then proceed to withdraw the application, because we would not be able to afford having the other restrictions that have been codified as part of this that would be stuck with the property as part of any rezoning, whether it's R7D, R7A, or anything else. It just would not work, so we would have to withdraw the application before there's a vote, and then proceed on an as-of-right basis. And the as-of-right basis, as was brought up at the City Planning Commission hearings, today, as-of-right, under today's zoning, there is a scenario, admittedly not the most likely scenario, but in the realm of possibilities, that would have a significantly greater impact on the Brooklyn Botanic Garden than the application that's now in front of the City Council. And that impact expands by magnitudes if City of yes for housing opportunity is adopted, or the impacts get even more significant on an as-of-right basis with R6A. The R7D through this rezoning, and particularly with the sloping plane that we're proposing as a text amendment, provides unprecedented protection for the garden, and is only possible if this rezoning moves forward.
I just want to reiterate, Mr. Chairman, we're only doing this because if we have to, because we simply can't finance it. There is not anyone, traditional lender, in the current capital markets that would give us the financing terms that the pension fund is giving us, a large part because these are the members' contributions. So, if we are further reduced and we remain where we are without the workforce housing option, as David said, we have to withdraw, not because we don't want to, but because we have to.
Can you explain the difference between the 15-degree angle approved by CPC and the 10-degree angle requested by the garden, and what does that do to the project?
Yeah. And if you look at Slide 9 in the presentation, you can see here how all of this comes together, both in what was originally certified in the City Planning, what we had proposed through our text amendment, what City Planning ultimately approved, and what BBG is now requesting with the R7A and the 10-degree angle. What it comes down to, the way that these, so the angle is the thing that ultimately controls how much density we can put onto the site. So, we had initially proposed a 26.83 degree angle, which allowed us to maximize all of the floor area available with R8A, 475 units. That now is off the table. So, with City Planning reducing that to 15 degrees, what that did was effectively max out the amount of floor area that we could fit in to the envelope, which puts us at about a 5.35 FAR, which is an R7D density. And what that did compared to what we were proposing was reduce the longest shadow on the Brooklyn Botanic Garden from 1 hour and 29 minutes on the Hardy Plant Nursery Yard on that June 21 Analysis Day to 1 hour and 9 minutes, so a total reduction of 20 minutes. The reduction from R7D to R7A would knock off an additional 10% of the units, about 36 units. We would be capped out at 4.81 FAR. So, that assumed at R7A, that assumes that City of yes is adopted, which would raise the R7AFAR to 5.01. Otherwise, it would have to, right, with R7A, it would be 4.6 without it, so potentially even a further reduction of another 15 or 20-so units, and all of which the shadow impact would go from an hour and 9 minutes on the longest shadow in the R7D to 1 hour and 6 minutes with the R7A. So, 3 minutes of shadow differences, but what it does by knocking down the unit count even further than where it's now, the project would be entirely not viable, even with workforce housing, and there would be nothing to do but to move forward on an as-of-right basis.
All right. I mean, look, this is a very unique development site in terms of proximity and potential impact on the Botanical Gardens, which is a very important staple within the New York City or community. or community, which will have great assets of future residents projected this project is built. Why I don't understand is why you have not been more proactively, and I do appreciate the $500,000 commitment, the $1 million commitment that you guys have gave, given to the park and other commitments, but being more proactively trying to protect the greenhouses from the impact from the start. So, I believe there is a solution here to be found, but you just need to fully commit with all the local stakeholders within the community to do so, because I do believe that a deal can be met. And with that being said, I'm going to yield the floor to Councilmember Hudson.
Thank you so much, and good morning. How long have you owned this property on Franklin Avenue?
Since 2017.
And did you, did you purchase the property with the intent to rezone for higher density?
Yes.
The former spice factory site next door decided to proceed with as-of-right development under R-6A at seven stories, as you've mentioned. Can you just explain why increasing density is important to you all?
So, the increasing density is important here because that is what enables the permanent income restrictions of M-I-H to work without public subsidy. Obviously, the city has capacity to fund affordable housing in certain circumstances, which, for the record, we've had extensive discussions with the city about being able to work to increase affordability here, and the administration has told us that such funding is not available for this project. But overall, the thinking of M-I-H back when it was introduced now eight, nine years ago was that the increase in density, of market rate density, is what offsets the carrying costs for the affordable units. And so, to build this thing entirely market rate at 2016, when land values are high and construction costs are high, the only way to do it is to develop market rate, because there's just nothing there that accounts for the, that the cost of building the affordable units is higher than the rents you can generate from those units.
Which is exactly why we sought the upzoning, Councilwoman. We do not want to be the bringer of non-union market rate luxury condos in a community that is suffering enormous gentrification and needs affordable housing. So, the purpose was to purchase it and build something that addressed that versus, as our neighbors next door are doing, just do market rate condos. I don't think anyone on the council wants market rate condos, which is why we're trying to salvage the project.
But, so, just to be clear, you all, as the current owners and in this current iteration of the project, you would develop the market rate condos if you don't get the rezoning that you want, or would you sell the property to somebody who you-
We are hoping that that is not a reality we need to address, so I can't answer that.
Okay. If this rezoning were not approved, and sorry, I just want to go back to what you mentioned. You said that you've been told affirmatively that you would not receive public subsidy for the project?
Correct. The current HPD and HDC term sheets do not have room to fund any kind of mixed income developments. There's like one mixed income, which is a kind of a pilot program that's for smaller projects than this. Those are the existing term sheets, and I think also with this, we were told that right now, the city has about 1,300 or so units of 100% affordable developments that are in the UHLER pipeline. But HPD's funding pipeline for their support, for the subsidized housing is about five, six years out to be able to close. So, even stuff that the council is voting on in the coming months is not going to be able to be funded by the city for five, six years, and that, with the carrying costs that we have, because as private developers, it's just not, even if the term sheet were there, a five, six-year timeline would not be feasible.
Yeah, I think the city has decided, as a matter of policy, to only fund 100% non-union-built affordable housing. And that's something that we didn't want to do, wanted to have a mixed income, and we want to have a union BFO, union-built, union-financed, union-operated, for the first time to have a template that we can duplicate in this city moving forward.
Thank you. And what would the size of an as-of-right development be? If you could just run through, like, how many units that would be?
Yeah, so, an as-of-right, a condo development would be about 168 units. All condos with city of yes, a hypothetical development, I think when city planning ran the numbers as part of it, would be with universal affordability, would be something like 230-something developments, but we believe that such a development is not likely.
You believe that such a development with the, as of, with the city of yes is not likely, or-
That kind of a development, we think that regardless of what happens with city of yes, the most likely development absent a rezoning is about 165 to 170 condo units.
Okay, thank you.
With obviously no affordability.
Understood. And would that development, would an as-of-right development cast any shadows onto the Brooklyn Botanic Garden?
Yes.
Okay, and sorry, I'm just doing some math here, but I'll ask my next question. Okay. Can you just explain how the as-of-right development would cast shadows on the garden?
So, the as-of-right development today has a maximum building height of 75 feet, plus an additional 35-foot allowance for bulkheads, which would put the maximum height of the building at about 100, if my math is right, 110 feet. I'm a lawyer, so I don't trust my math ever, but at that, and that wall in the back of the building, located under the, which would be about 20, right, as of right today, 30 feet from the rear lot line, the, as proposed, the building would actually, the R-7D building would be lower than that. And that wall in the back of the building is what drives the shadow impact on the garden.
Okay, thank you. I am not a lawyer, but I'm also not a mathematician, so also maybe don't trust my numbers, but that's why I got out my trusty little calculator. I just want to confirm, and I'm just trying to understand and paint the picture, of the actual change in unit numbers and what that actually means and looks like. So, from R-8A to R-7D, it looks like the unit number change is 120 units, whereas the, the delta between R-7D and R-7A is only 36 units.
Yes.
And then, as of right, the delta between the R-7A and as of right would be 149 units. And so, the change of 36 units, the reduction of 36 units from R-7D to R-7A is smaller than the number of units as of right to R-7D?
Yes.
Yeah, I think, one minute, David, I think you might be confusing apples and oranges?
No, I understand that there wouldn't be affordability included, but I'm, that's what I'm hoping you can explain a little-
Yeah, and so, just walking through the floor area, the R-6A as-of-right, because there's no mandatory inclusionary housing that is mapped, under current zoning, the maximum floor area, the maximum FAR is 3.0. With R-7A, and these numbers assume city of yes, which is how city planning calculated it, the maximum FAR for R-7A is 5.01. So, that is a, yeah, 67% increase in floor area between the R-6A and the R-7A. Because you're going from three to 5.01, and between R-7A and R-7D, you're going from 5.01 to 5.6, where, and even with the 5.6, because of the solar plane that's proposed as part of the 15-degree angle and the text amendment, you can't actually max out the site at 5.6, you actually cap out at about 5.35. So, that's why there's a relatively small gap between R-7D and R-7A, and then such a big drop-off once you go from R-7A to the next low, to the next zoning district, which is R-6A.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, just bear with me. Okay, so, under R-6A, city of yes would increase the height from 70 feet to 95 feet, but only if 20% of the building is 60% AMI, correct?
Yes, as currently proposed. The universal affordability preference would allow the building to come up, which would raise the total height of the building in the back to about 130 feet, which is substantially higher than both what we proposed as the R-8A, but even, right, and, right, certainly what is now in front of the council with R-7D.
And are you willing to share with us the profit margin that you need in order to pursue this project?
Let me address that. As I indicated, we're being funded by the AFL-CIO Housing Investment Trust, the pension dollars of these hundreds, and in the city, thousands of union members. With the reduction that has already occurred, not the additional reduction with the 36 units, it sounds diminutive, but it's not. The project didn't work, which was why we indicated we'd have to withdraw. We've been able to creatively find a way to make the project work with union labor, with union pension funds, with union operation. Any reduction- Thank you, William. Any reduction makes the project financially untenable. There is an extremely tight profit margin, but we cannot pencil red moving forward with the development that doesn't work. So, whatever the profit will be, it will be extremely nominal. Right now, we need to move forward as a developer, which is, in a way, kind of ironic that the roles have changed. We are the spokesperson for the working class. We are the ones trying to get union members to work. And so, we're trying to stay in this game and show it can happen with the political will of the council.
So, is that a no, then, that you wouldn't be willing to share with us the profit margin you need? Because I hear what you're saying, but what I'm trying to get at is if there are specific numbers, and are you willing to share what those numbers are so that we can also be creative in offering solutions?
Good.
Yeah, so, we're happy to talk, I don't, generally, that, talk about margins and particulars in a public forum, but we can talk about it. But I think, as Mr. Wallace said, it's not about, you know, a particular target at this point. I think we're past the point of this being, you know, profit development, right, massively profit development, one that anyone would look at today and say, I want to do this, as much as this is a, we've now been doing this for many, many years, and it's now about putting together what's left. And the real thing is putting this project in the black, where it is financeable by the Housing Investment Trust, where they can look back to, they have a fiduciary responsibility to their pension hold and say that this is a sound investment and a good place to put the money. And as long as we can find a place where that works, then we can make the development work.
And we've also shared all of those performances and iterations with the city already. We met with Nate Bliss, we met with HPD, we met with HDC, none of them work.
Okay, so, maybe you can share all of that with the city council too, then, because-
They all pencil red.
We are a separate entity from all of those agencies you've mentioned.
Be happy to do so. They all pencil red.
Okay. We're just, it's helpful to have the same information that you're referencing, if we can have it, and so that's why I'm asking the question.
Absolutely, Councilwoman.
Why did you initially propose an R-8A district, knowing that there would still cast significant shadows on the Brooklyn Botanic Garden, considering the long process that this project has, has been through? And did you ever consider a district with the lower height limits?
So, we've, obviously, we've looked at, you know, the options available between the existing R-6A, there's R-7A, R-7D, R-7X, R-8A. And the reason why we looked at R-8A and brought that forward is because when you look at the area, and I think this is on slide eight, you can see what's going on, that in the 1991 rezoning that was done to protect the Brooklyn Botanic Garden, R-8A was mapped along Washington Avenue, which is closer to the garden and intervening between where the development site is and where these sensitive resources are. And so, with R-8A, we could never kind of exceed the shadow impacts that are already possible on Washington Avenue, because not only is it the same zoning district, we're also actually further back. Now, granted, right, the buildings that exist there on Washington Avenue are generally of a lower profile, One Sullivan Place being the exception, right, which was built recently and reaches the full, reaches the full height of the R-8A. But that's where we started, because that's the density that's already existing, and we're further back in where we could put the project in a position where the, any impact for seeker purposes, because we have to measure it based on, you know, what's there, not what could be there, would not exceed what was already possible from the existing zoning all the way going back to 1991.
Okay, thank you. And forgive me, some of these questions are a little repetitive, but I just want to make sure I get them on the record. So, we talked a little bit about the, the 10-degree alternative or R-7A. The City Planning Commission modified this application to R-7D with a 15-degree sloping plane to transition height down to 85 feet on the western side of the building to reduce shadows. The CPC also considered a deeper modification to R-7A with a 10-degree sloping plane. Can you just go into a little bit more about why you believe the R-7A 10-degree alternative is infeasible?
Yeah, so, and I think important for this slide 11 shows you some of this. So, obviously, the difference between the R-7A and the R-7D, first off, is a difference of 35 units. And that is with the assumption that the bulk increases for R-7A that are proposed as part of city of yes are ultimately adopted. The reduction would be even further without it. And then, we want to look at, once we take, right, obviously, that 36 units, when we're talking about a project with as tight margins as we're talking, 36 units puts us deep into the red that even workforce housing can't pull us out of. And then also, we look at what the difference is between this. So, this slide shows you three resources that were evaluated as part of the EIS. The first one looks at the Brooklyn Botanic Garden as a whole, separate from like the individual resources, but looks at parts of the garden, that some of the lawn areas and some of the other areas, and where the shadow impacts are. And you can see the times of when you would see the incremental shadow impacts, all of which are before 9:00 AM. And you see that the difference between the R-7D and the R-7A is a matter of minutes, right? You're talking about a real difference being on the June 21st Analysis Day, is a difference of four minutes for the garden totally, and then December 21st, four minutes totally. But in particular, during this review process, both during this application process and during some of the earlier, the earlier iteration of this, the focus has been particularly on what the garden identified as 23 sensitive resources, particularly sun-sensitive resources where they house those collections. And those are the resources A through V on the bottom line. And you can see what the difference is there. And you're talking, particularly, a lot of focus between the Parks Department and the Brooklyn Botanic Garden has been on the Hardy Plant Nursery Yard on the June 21st Analysis Day. And you see there that the difference is three minutes. And if you look at slide 12, we show the, 12 and 13 show the, of the 23 sensitive resources that the garden identified as part of this environmental review process, the ones where there are differences between the R-7D and the R-7A, the other ones either have no impact on both or have no difference on both. And you see that we're talking about a matter of minutes, really, right, you know, seven minutes in September, but, and on the resources that really matter here at the bottom of the page, the Hardy Plant Nursery Yard, a difference of three minutes on the most impacted day, which is the June 21st Analysis Day. And so, we think that the trade-off of 36-plus units, which really threaten project feasibility, for all for three minutes of differences in shadow, especially considering the commitment that we've already made to half a million dollars for an artificial lighting system to supplement light, as well as other infrastructure improvements, as the gardens experts deem necessary, that the three minutes does not justify not just the 36 units, but also really the viability of the entire project.
Thank you. And can you clarify which M-I-H options are currently proposed to be mapped at this site? So, M-I-H option four, I believe it is?
Yeah, so, city planning approved this with M-I-H option one, which is what we had initially proposed. On the terms of the zoning resolution, whenever there's an application for mandatory inclusionary housing, by definition, all four options are in front of the council, which is where the council has the option to choose between, one and two have to be mapped. And then, the council has the option to map either option, the deep affordability option or the workforce housing option, or both. We are asking that the council map the workforce housing option here along- We are asking that the council map the workforce housing option here alongside Option 1.
Okay, and that is, at 30% of floor area at an average of 115% AMI, is that correct?
Correct. 5% at 70 AMI, 5% at 90 AMI, up and then with an average of 115%. Yes.
And do you know what the income for a family of three at 115% AMI is?
So, for a family of three at 115% AMI, that is between, just because we publish the numbers at 110 and 120, it is between $153,780 and $167,760. And as Mr. Wallace next to me can talk about, and part of why we think that workforce is appropriate here, even if it might not be in other parts of the city and other projects, as Mr. Wallace was saying, this is going to be a union financed project, this is going to be union-built, and this is going to be union-operated. And when we talk about 40% AMI, 60% AMI, 80% AMI, these are income levels that foreclose working-class families in New York, especially union families, especially public employees, from being able to access the affordable housing, and leaves them to compete for market-rate housing with people in the finance sector, the professional, right, the financial services, technology sector. And it's also a need that we have in the city to have this kind of housing. And so we think that for a project like this, such a thing would be appropriate. And these are income ranges. Kyle, you can talk about where the incomes are for union families, and that these numbers at 115% AMI are about where we find union families.
Do you want me to speak, too? About the union families?
Yeah, so, as a former president of 32BJ, with a membership of about 90,000 here in the city, the average, the average income for one of our members is somewhere between $80,000 and $100,000. If you put a 32BJ member with a correction officer, or with a home care worker, or with a laborer, or a construction worker, or a civil servant, this, this allows the most vulnerable group of workers in our city, who's leaving our city at the highest, at the highest numbers, black and brown workers, because they cannot find affordable housing. These are union members, our workers, our civil servants, healthcare workers, uniformed officers, just, just the people who keep this city running every day, and they find it more and more difficult to, to live in the city that they, that they service.
Thank you. And would all of the units you're proposing as affordable be permanently affordable?
Yes.
And what is the proposed unit size mix? So studios, one bedrooms, two bedrooms, three bedrooms, et cetera?
So, it's a moving target, and obviously, subject to HPD approval through BLDS, there are, HPD does mandate certain percentages of two bedrooms relative to one bedrooms in studios, and would have to be submitted for their approval, just like any other MIH project.
I understand that it would have to be submitted for their approval, but do you have a mix that you're putting on the table?
Yeah, it's still a moving target, based on, especially because we, you know, since City Planning reduced the density, we've been first focused on making sure that there is a project that could be worked out, before we've been able to get into the details of exactly what this project would look like. We think it would be different than what the, because of the building constraints, it would look different than, it's not just a shorter version of the 14-story unit, and so we'd have to really sit back with the architects and figure out what the best mix is.
Okay, it would be great to have that information. Maybe you can follow up with us, because if we're talking about, you know, a workforce option, and, you know, folks with families, we want to make sure that the unit mix is appropriate.
Be delighted, Councilwoman. We'd be delighted.
Okay. The proposal includes a special permit to reduce parking requirements, but not eliminate them entirely. Why include any parking spaces at all in this transit-rich part of Brooklyn?
So, we've heard extensively from the community here that despite, that despite the transit access that this neighborhood has, there still is a demand for parking. There's still broad concerns about existing parking, and that when you have 355 units, there will be people with cars, and they will need to go somewhere where there's already a shortage of parking. And that is why we proposed this reduction. It still allows us to provide parking to the extent that the market requires it, and still requires us to provide 20%, and gives us more flexibility if we think that more might be worth having, because the community needs it. But we don't think that eliminating it entirely here would be, you know, and I guess, let me say it differently, is that there's a larger policy discussion happening in the city about entirely eliminating these parking requirements. We think that regardless of what happens with reducing those requirements, some amount of parking here is appropriate, but it's significantly lower than the 50% required by zoning, which is why we've sought the special permit.
Okay, so just in terms of reducing costs of the project, my understanding is, is that building parking below ground is very costly, so would you consider eliminating parking in order to save money on the project?
Yeah, and that's precisely why we've proposed the reduction. But what also comes down, it's not space, dollar-for-dollar, space-for-space, that you take, you take from 100 spaces to 99 spaces, you save X dollars. At a certain point, when you have to clear out the space for parking, or for that matter, if you have to excavate, because you need to put foundations, and you have the space for a certain number of parking spaces, the costs don't change to provide the parking. It's when you start increasing those numbers of parking spaces to meet the 50% requirement of zoning, and you have to start now taking out parts of the first floor, taking out retail space, taking out residential space to put in those parking spaces, that's when the costs start to kick in. And so, with this special permit, we think we're striking the right balance by bringing down the construction costs that let us provide the affordable housing that we're trying to do here, and also meeting the parking demand without just creating extra parking spaces, driving up construction costs unnecessarily, and just so people have more cars on the street. It's not what we're trying to do.
So that's the 20%, right?
Yes.
That number? Okay, thank you. And then this is my last question. What tenants or uses have you considered for the proposed ground-floor commercial space?
That is a complete work in progress. We have always attempted to have this focused on neighborhood businesses, community-based franchises, creative things like that. We have to see what the final iteration is, and continue that focus, and hopefully work with your office to make that happen.
Have you had any conversations or reached out to Community Board 9, the Borough President, or other stakeholders for input?
We have met with the community board repeatedly. One of the reasons why we retained the 20% was that there were two major focuses from the community board. One was Jackie Robinson. We had a community forum, I think one of the, your staff people was there, got feedback what we would do. And the second was what David said, that in Crown Heights, they still want the parking. Parking would not have an appreciable impact on the finances, but whether we have parking or not, again, is up to the city council.
But no requests for consideration specifically pertaining to the ground-floor commercial space?
We have had discussions indicating that's what we intend to do, have not gotten far enough until we have a project to make that happen, which is why I look forward to working with your office to facilitate that. I know you have a business background, and always appreciate the need for community-based businesses, job creators, and we'd like to have that as part of our project.
So businesses, not necessarily like a community facility or anything like that?
All open for discussion.
Yeah, and I'd say that with the, you know, previous iteration of the project, there was a lot more discussion around, there was more of those spaces, there were more commercial spaces, there were community spaces. We've had those discussions. Obviously, that project did not move forward. We've now been in this iteration of the project for the better part now of over two years, more than two years. And then, we have to build it. We're now dealing with approximately 8,500 square-foot retail space that realistically is not going to be ready for another three years if approved. And so, especially if we, you know, it'd be one thing to lock in a multinational, someone in as a tenant, this far out, but to have a community business, it's a bit premature to have that discussion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hudson, for your question. Councilmember Breyer?
Thank you, Chair. What percent of this project is funded by a union, the union pension?
100%.
Okay.
Yes and no. Clarification, don't. The debt portion of the project, there has been tens of millions of dollars of equity from the developer put into the project. The debt for the project will be 100% union-funded.
Okay. I have never seen anything like this done before in the last three years that I've been on this committee. So this model that you're pursuing, I mean, I encourage it. I think union labor-supported projects are very important, but I keep, I would hope that you continue to work with, with our council member in Brooklyn to hopefully reach a point. I know that she cares deeply about her constituents and, and labor. I would hate to see you walk away from a project like this.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Breyer. There being no more questions from the council, this applicant panel is excused. Councilor, then any members of the public who wish to testify on this project?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yes, Chair. Yes, Chair, we have people signed up both in person and online, but if you have signed up online and you are not signed into the Zoom session, you will not be called. So if you have signed up online, it is very important that you access this hearing via your Zoom. We will first hear from people here in person.
Thank you.
In panels of four.
Thank you. For the members of the public here to testify, please note that witnesses will generally be called in panels of three. If you are a member of the public, signed up to testify on the proposal, please stand by when you hear your name being called and prepare to speak when I say that you may begin. Please also note that once all panelists in your group have completed their testimony, if remotely, you will be removed from the meeting as a group. The next group of speakers will be introduced. Once removed, participants may continue to view the livestream broadcast of this hearing on the council's website. Members of the public will be given two minutes to speak. Once you hear the bell, please wrap it up in 10 to 15 seconds. Please do not begin until the Sergeant-at-Arms has started the clock. The following individuals who signed up to testify should now come to the witness table. I'm going to start with a panel of two this time, which is Rowan Blake and Catherine Glass. Excuse me.
Please just let me know when to begin.
Yes. Ms. Glass, you may begin.
Thank you so much. I'm here on behalf of Brooklyn Botanic Garden's president, Adrian Benapi, who unfortunately wasn't able to make it today. My name is Catherine Glass. I'm the garden's chief public affairs officer. First, I'd like to say that BBG is keenly appreciative of the work that the City Planning Commission has done to foster new development and to protect this vital, more than 100-year-old city asset. We thank you and your peers in the, in public service for your consideration. The garden's analysis indicates that while the project has evolved in a positive direction, the R7D zoning class with a 15-degree imaginary plane would still cause significant loss of sunlight to the garden, particularly in the winter, when the sun is lowest on the horizon. For that reason, we respectfully request that the subcommittee alter the proposed rezoning from an R7D to an R8A, and that they shave five degrees off the imaginary sloping plane, making it 10 degrees rather than 15 degrees. With me today is my colleague Rowan Blake, Vice President of Horticulture, who has prepared testimony on the impacts of these various rezoning proposals, and what we think would be optimal for the garden and its collections. Before thanking you for the opportunity to give testimony today, I want to remind the subcommittee that the garden is generally not an advocacy organization. In other words, we don't seek out opportunities to opine on issues of public housing or, or union pensions, or affordable housing. But since this development became public in 2019, the garden has been drawn into a campaign to oppose the originally proposed development. We've tasked staff, board, and outside experts to help us communicate the existential necessity of sunlight for a living museum of plants that grow in our front and our back-of-house collections. We've expended hundreds of thousands of dollars defending the garden's New York City conferred responsibility to grow and, and display plants. We think now that the time has come to return to our role as Botanic Garden, to guarding the legacy of our visionary founders and the many New York City elected leaders, who over the decades have supported and protected this garden, who imagined in more than a century-old partnership, a place where urban dwellers could lose themselves in a sense of nature and benefit from immersion in the world of plants. With your help and protection, we will do just that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rowan?
Good morning, councilmembers. I'm Rowan Blake, VP of Horticulture at Brooklyn Botanic Garden. VP of Horticulture at Brooklyn Botanic Garden, I'm responsible for the garden's 52 acres and 46 gardeners and 10,000 plant species. The SECA technical manual was updated in 2021 to assess Botanic Gardens as unique sunlight-sensitive resources with sunlight needs rather than prior thresholds of plant survival. A weakness in the shadow methodology excludes the first and last 90 minutes of daylight, for example, around one and a half hours' loss of winter sunlight to the conservatories from the 15-degree scenario. The applicant commissioned two reports, the Arboris Report and the Solar Access Study. Both have their methodological flaws, however, both conclude a shadow impact greater than is still claimed by the applicant. The expert greenhouse managers in the Arboris Report disagree on the overall impact and state that shadow impacts would be long-term and experimental in nature. In addressing the applicant's reference to three minutes difference, this simplifies issues to one area of the garden with a simple in-out time, rather than an estimate of the overall shadow footprint. It's not just the timing, it's the size of the shadow impact. The 15-degree scenario impacts a far greater area and more plant collections than the 10-degree scenario. The difference is localized impacts compared to larger, longer shadows from additional stories. I would say, regarding the scenarios, we've only seen isometric views with renderings at different times of day, nor have we seen as-of-right plans being made available. How at this 11th hour can meaningful studies or comparisons be made? Regarding the costs, they are not costs that are voluntary, they are dictated by Parks and Recreation, and they're to replace aging equipment like-for-like, mainly our climate control system, not lighting, and this is for general plant health, and to expand the climate control system to the nursery yard. It will not change our growing practices. Sunlight cannot be replaced by supplementary electric lighting. Please limit this development to the 10-degree scenario and not risk a local and global gem. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. I don't have questions for this panel. Councilmember Hudson?
Yes, thank you, Chair. You referenced this a little bit in your testimony, but can you go into greater detail about what we've heard in prior testimonies, specifically about three minutes of sunlight being referenced? Can you clarify the actual minutes of sunlight lost? Which collections the lack of sunlight would impact? And the overall impact that you mentioned just now, not just on, it's not just about the sunlight directly, it's also about the size of the shadow, locations, and things like that?
Yes. One example that I would give is, the various tables, you see that there's something like a 12-minute shadow impact of the conservatories quoted there. By discounting the time from sunrise, the sunlight from sunrise, we know that a 15-degree scenario, through working through their drawings as best as possible, a 15-degree scenario would lead to around a one-and-a-half-hour impact to the conservatories in December, not a 30-minute impact, sorry, a 12-minute impact.
I'm sorry, can you, can you clarify that?
Yeah.
You're saying the, the 15-degree slope would have a one hour and 30-minute shadow impact?
Approximately, yeah. Somewhere between an hour, an hour and 25 minutes and an hour and 30 minutes.
Okay, and then the, the 10-degree would yield?
That would go down, it would be closer to as-of-right, and so that's more to around, for example, a to around, for example, one hour and 10 minutes. So it's not three minutes here and there. You know, it's not a trivial impact. It's a large impact. The other thing that is excluded, and you know, as I mentioned in the renderings with the different scenarios, they all illustrate a shadow at different points in the morning, so you can't make a visual comparison between the two. They also don't give a top-down plan view that show the actual footprint of the shadow. So where there may be, you know, a comparison to be made between a one-and-a-half-hour versus a one-hour, 10-minute shadow impact of the conservatory, is it small additional shadow, small areas of additional shadow that that timing is based upon? Or is it the entire selection of workhouses that grow the range of plants for all of the pavilions, for example? That is not something that you can conclude from looking at the images that have been produced for these alternate scenarios.
So what types of images or plans would you need in order to make a thorough assessment?
Well, it would be a top-down view. It would be considering the periods that are outside of the basic SECA analysis as well. For, you know, this is from the point of view of me thinking of the plant collections that we hold and are responsible for to base any kind of management of risk based on the different scenarios. What has been presented is, you know, it's bare minimum, really.
Can you just give a sense of the impact on plant collections? Not necessarily, I guess my question is just a broader question of like the impact generally of lack of sunlight, larger shadows being cast. What impact does that have on the garden's ability to grow specific types of species of plants and so forth?
Obviously, the larger the shadow and the longer the shadow from a duration point of view means that it's going to impact more of our plant collections, and the shadow impacts are going to be more severe. We grow an incredibly wide range of plant material from very high light with high light requirements from areas such as, you know, equatorial regions, desert regions, that have really high-intensity, long-duration sunlight. It would have the effect of, you know, reducing growth, reducing the health of plants, reducing the range of the collections, reducing the breadth of our collection, what is represented, countries of the world represented in our collections. It would also reduce our programmatic mandates that are based upon our collections, such as education, for example. Currently, we can teach school groups all the way through the year because we have plants in flower and fruit and with different structures available to us year-round. A reduction in light, as I said, and as the experts that were consulted in the developer's own reports concluded, you know, it would be a gradual change, it would be experimental. None of them could say, you know, it would affect 10, 20, 30% of the collection. It would be experimental in nature. And, you know, we see these very, you know, experimental from a planning point of view, experimental from an impact point of view. How can you make a considered, you know, decision on risk to this global collection due to the experimental nature and the very, you know, kind of last-minute considerations that they're asking for?
Thank you. And then I know you all are not in the housing business, but can you just talk a little bit about an ideal development scenario on the site as-of-right versus this 10-degree plan option?
The 10-degree option, as we understand it, is very close to what would be as-of-right under the city of yes. And as we've mentioned, you know, the ideal situation would be the current as-of-right. It would lead to increased shadow impact, obviously, because, you know, those lots, some of those lots have remained vacant for a long time. And so, yes, there would be, and so, you know, our aim would be something that would be as close to that as possible. Obviously, as you mentioned, you know, we're not planners, we're not architects. It seems that their 10-degree proposal does allow them additional FAR and additional units. If they kept the overall envelope as close to as-of-right, that would be what we had always thought we would be neighboring and basing our collections and their needs on.
Thank you, just one second. Okay, that's it for me. Thank you, thank you, and thank you.
Thank you. I have a question. Do you guys currently use any form of artificial lighting currently at the botanical gardens for any of the plants there?
We do, and we're very clear about what we do with that artificial lighting. We've had an article online since 2019 explaining for interested local residents, for example, that there's a purple color that comes from our glass houses during the daytime.
Is there a difference between, I mean, I'm not a professional, I'm just asking, is there a difference between the artificial lighting and the natural lighting with the productivity of the plants at the garden?
There is.
And what is that difference?
That it's not comparable, it doesn't penetrate through the plants the same as natural sunlight does. There are two main types of artificial lighting. There's those to extend day length, and there's those to improve the quality of light that currently exists. Ours are very much in the latter. It's to increase the wavelengths of light that we don't have at these latitudes.
But is it still efficient to, I guess, I guess to get the job done?
Yeah, it's to augment the wavelengths that the equatorial plants especially would receive closer to the equator. It's not to increase day length. It's to maintain the plant health of the collection. Again, in the report that was commissioned by the developer, it notes that lighting would have to be incredibly close to the plants, that it only benefits one layer of plants. If you go into our tropical conservatory, you'll see we have a canopy layer, we have a middle layer, we have a ground layer of plant material. You can't, from a practicable point of view, use light to supplement and replace natural daylight, natural sunlight.
All right. Councilmember Bray?
Are there plants that thrive in the shade?
No plant grows in total shade.
Excuse me?
No plant grows in total shade.
I saw your partner nodding her head yes, is that a yes or a no?
I was nodding indicating that Rowan would answer the question.
Okay.
He's the horticulturist specialist and knows a great deal about plants and sunlight.
All right, please proceed.
No plant grows in total shade. There are very few plants that would grow in very low light levels. This is why when you see houseplants, for example, or you see the plants that are retailed on the market for shade situations, there's a very limited amount of plants that would fulfill that suitability. Certainly not that would produce flowers, certainly not that would produce fruit for our educational purposes. It would be a complete simplification of not only a plant collection, but it would be a simplification of, you know, remit and educational and programmatic output.
Do you think that a combination of artificial light and low-light plants could help alleviate some of these concerns?
No. Not from a practical point of view. We would no longer be a Botanic Garden, really.
About how much, my last question, Chair, about how much of the botanical garden will still get direct sunlight for the same amount of time it gets now?
So that's not something that I could give you, say, acreage or square feet. That's not something that I could give you off the top of my head, I could prepare that as.
I think that would be very relevant for this committee to have.
Yep, I can prepare that as a written submission.
Thank you.
Thank you. There being no more questions for this panel, this panel is excused. Thank you so much for testifying. The next panel I'm going to call up consists of Andrew Moger, Michael Vestarelli, and Kevin Elkins. Michael Vestarelli?
They're all carpenters, so I'll take.
Oh, you're gonna do everything?
Yeah, yeah.
So you're just gonna do everything, Cap? All right, thanks. That makes everything better. All right, Kevin, go ahead. You still only get two minutes, though.
All right, if you say so. I just want to start off before I get into my actual remarks. You know, the people who did the shadow analysis, Mr. Tom, I believe, Thomas Tomassati, is actually used by the garden. So his analysis is good when he's working for the garden, but when he's doing a similar analysis for somebody else, it seems that analysis is no longer correct. So I just want to point that out before I begin my remarks. You know, in previous rezonings, the carpenters' union has aggressively challenged developers to increase affordability and ensure that workers earn family-sustaining wages. However, this project stands apart for the right reasons. It will be 100% union-built and provide an exceptional amount of desperately needed affordable housing for New Yorkers. Additionally, the concerns about shadows raised by some bad-faith actors have shifted from sincere to disingenuous. You know, Councilmember Hudson has done an extraordinary job in competing, dealing with a lot of competing interests to make this project protect and preserve the garden. And I think what the project that was presented to CCP did that. I think we're now trying to keep that project alive and protect the garden and protect it for future generations. But we can't let the goalposts be continuously moved to the point that we are no longer building houses because a few people are bringing up poison pill suggestions. And frankly, this 5%, excuse me, 10% versus 15% is a poison pill. It's going to reduce the amount of income, it's going to reduce the amount of units available for, to subsidize the rest of the project, and that's critical. It has to pencil out. If it can't be built and financed, then nobody wins here. And maybe that's the goal. You know, I saw a comment from somebody from the garden in the Times saying they could live with luxury building. I don't think we could live with that kind of development. We need true housing, and it's going to be union-built. It's going to be a paradigm-shifting development that we desperately, desperately need. The council member has aggressively and rightfully, and key word here is rightfully, fought to make sure there is little to no impact on the garden. The project has finally reached that goal, and even though it comes at the cost of union jobs, remember, 82% of it has been reduced. That's my members not being able to work on the project as much. That was coming from us. As much as that is happening, it's necessary to protect the garden. We support this project and hope this rezoning will pass. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just one question, and thank you for your testimony. The 82% reduction refers to what specifically?
I believe from the original amount of unit threshold, excuse me, unit threshold, I'm used to talking about 421, I'm sorry. The amount of units that started off with the proposal till now where it is now, and basically everything involved. But I can get the exact breakdown for you as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much, Kevin.
All right, thank you.
The last panel in person I'm going to call up consists of Anthony Williams, Tony Augusto, Jenny Ankada Malansky, sorry if I butchered your name, and Ari Espinal. We will begin with Tony Augusto.
Good morning. My name is Tony Augusto, and I'm a resident of this Brooklyn neighborhood as well as a member of DC9 Painters and L.A. Trades. I'm here today to express my strong support for the development project being proposed, particularly because of the invaluable union jobs that it'll bring to our community. While I fully understand the concerns regarding shadows and potential impacts on the nearby botanical gardens, I believe we must weigh the concerns against the critical need for neighborhood-stable jobs for the people who live there. Brooklyn is a borough of deep working-class roots, and we are in the midst of a time when many families are struggling with the cost of living, housing insecurity, and economic uncertainty. This project, which is committed to providing union jobs, offers a direct solution by creating meaningful work that provides fair wages, benefits, and long-term employment. These jobs aren't just paychecks. They are opportunities for our neighborhoods to support their families, invest in their futures, and stay in the community they love. The opposition, which primarily focuses on the impact of shadows and their proximity to the botanical gardens, is understandable, but should not override their urgent needs for our local workforce. The botanical gardens are a treasured part of our community, and I believe we can find ways to mitigate any negative impact through responsible building practices and ongoing collaboration between developers and community leaders. Modern construction methods can address concerns about shadows and environmental sustainability while still allowing progress to move forward. We have to ask ourselves what kind of Brooklyn we want to live in, a neighborhood that prioritizes aesthetics, aesthetics, or one that prioritizes the well-being of its people. Union jobs just don't benefit the workers who hold them, they strengthen the entire neighborhood when our community members have stable, well-paying jobs. They can afford to stay in their homes, support local businesses, and contribute to social and cultural fabric that makes Brooklyn so special. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, I will call on Ms. Jenny. How do you pronounce your last name for me, please?
It's Ankada Malansky.
Thank you.
Long one. Hi, everyone, thank you for this opportunity. My name is Jenny Ankada Malansky. I'm providing testimony today on behalf of Lowell Barton, who is the Vice President and Organizing Director of Laborers Local 10-10. Laborers Local 10-10 is a premier paving and road-building union of New York City. Our members work together to build streets, bridges, and highways throughout the five boroughs of New York City. We're an affiliate of the New York State Laborers, representing over 40,000 men and women across the state, and a proud affiliate of the Laborers International Union of North America. It is of the utmost importance for the Laborers Union that our members and the communities they live in are at the center of our advocacy. Today, I'm providing testimony to state Laborers Local 10-10's support of the 970 Franklin Avenue project and the proposal to rezone 962, 972 Franklin Avenue in the Crown Heights neighborhood of Brooklyn to create a mixed-income residential development dedicated to workforce and affordable housing. Important to note, this project will be built by members of the New York City Building and Construction Trades and will be financed by the AFL-CIO Housing Investment Trust, and that itself should be sufficient reason to support it. At a time when inequality is at an all-time high, unions play a critical role in ensuring family-sustaining wages and benefits for workers and their families, and by that standard, building the middle class. Unionized careers in the building trades not only support individual workers and their families, but also stimulate the local economy. When union workers earn decent pay, they spend those earnings in their community on housing, groceries, healthcare, and education, creating a positive ripple effect that benefits us all. Skip this little section since I already said it. This project being built, union-financed, and union-operated would ensure high standards and accountability throughout the process. Residents, some of whom are our union members, were engaged in this process to have their needs and concerns heard and addressed. The project will create, as was mentioned, affordable housing options for residents and essential workers as well as generate almost 1,000 union jobs, providing stable employment opportunities and an opportunity for more residents to earn a family-sustaining wage and career in the building and construction trades, all while contributing to the economic vitality of Crown Heights. In conclusion, the impact of union construction labor extends far beyond this job site. This project has the opportunity to expand the pathway to the middle class to more New York City residents and ensure safer working conditions. By investing in and supporting union labor, we invest in a more equitable and prosperous future for our communities. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you. Next I'm going to call on. Next, I will call Ari Espinal.
Good afternoon, Chairman, and committee members, and Councilmember Hudson. My name is Ari Espinal, member of Local 79, and I am here in behalf of Gary LaBarba, President of the Building and Construction Trade Council of the Greater New York and Vicinity. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to submit this testimony in support of 970 Franklin Avenue project. The Building and Construction Trades Council is an organization of local building and construction trade unions that are affiliated with 15 international unions in the North American Building Trades Union. Our local union affiliates represents approximately 100,000 union construction workers. The building trades mission is to rise the standards of living all workers to advocate for safe work conditions and to collectively advance working conditions for affiliates' members, as well as all workers in New York City. The 970 Franklin Avenue project is proposing to rezone 962 to 972 Franklin Avenue in Crown Heights, the neighborhood of Brooklyn, to create 14-story, mixed-income residential development in the neighborhood that would include approximately units dedicated to workforce and affordable housing. This type of project must move forward to given our city housing shortage, as it is will create housing affordable for our city teachers, firefighters, nurses, bus drivers, and grocery clerks. Additionally, this project is anticipated to create 1,000 union construction jobs and will finance, build, and operate it with union labor, providing well-paying jobs with family-sustaining wages and benefits to the residents of New York City. 970 Franklin Avenue is an example of type of housing projects that our city must support. It will create housing units that are affordable for working-class citizens, will also create jobs with fair wages and benefit that will allow workers to be able to afford to live in this city. We thank you for this opportunity to submit this testimony in support of 970 Franklin Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you. And last, I will call Anthony Williams.
Good morning, or good afternoon, as a matter of fact, everyone. First of all, I must say thank you for this opportunity to be testifying here for this very important project. And I must commend your team here, the work you've been doing, and the questions you have been asking are very sensitive. But therefore, also, I must commend the developer for trying to work with the community to ensure that for the first time ever in this city, that we're going to have a project of this nature, where it's going to be financed, managed, and operated by the union. This has never happened before. This is a unique project. And what's important about this project is that the people in this community will have an opportunity to live in the housing that they're providing. The reality is that when we look around, our children's future is at stake. And I understand the councilwoman and our, you know, and our constituency and what, you know, and the kind of work you're doing, and we have a right to represent them. But let's look at the most critical thing in this city. We don't have housing for our people. We don't have enough jobs for our people. The crime is escalating. With good union jobs, it's not a silver bullet, but we have an opportunity to start changing things in our community. This project is so unique that many people who live there would have an opportunity to work there. They would have an opportunity to be part of something different. And that's why the Building and Construction Trades, the 100 black construction workers, Laborers Local 79, and the mason tenders are in support of this project. I'm looking forward, and we are looking forward, that you guys, that we can work together and find a solution, that we can make this city better and provide the housing and the opportunities for our children and for our future. Thank you. I'm looking forward to work with you guys.
Thank you so much for all of you testifying here today. Appreciate it. You can just do this, though, all right? Councilmember Hudson, you have a question for this panel?
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you all for your testimony. Do you know what, do you know the average salary of, that average salary earned by your members?
Our members make, average, a journeyman makes over forty dollars an hour as a labor on their job. Actually, forty-two dollars an hour goes into his pocket.
You wouldn't happen to know the annual salary equivalent to that, would you?
The what?
The area median income or the annual salary equivalent? No.
No.
Okay. Forty-two dollars an hour. And...
It also depends on the work and the trade, so it varies, depends on the project.
Do you have like a range?
We could get that information for you, depending on what, on the projects.
Okay. And then, do you know what percentage of your members have two-income earners per household?
We will have those information right away, but for sure, we will be able to get that to you.
Okay. That sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I appreciate it. And I do want to just state for the record that there are union jobs at the garden, too. Thank you.
We are aware.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. There being no more questions, this panel is excused. Thank you so much for testifying. I'm going to call up our online panel now, which consists of one person, Ms. Marcia Walcott-Dunn. Ms. Dunn, if you can hear me, please unmute, and you may begin. Ms. Marcia Walcott-Dunn, if you can hear me, please unmute, and you may begin. Ms. Dunn, can you hear me? We'll stand at ease until we hear if Ms. Dunn is still available. Ms. Marcia Dunn, if you can hear me, please unmute, and you can start your testimony. Okay. All right. We're going to stand at ease for 60 seconds until Ms. Dunn is available. Okay. We are unable to hear from Ms. Dunn. Ms. Dunn, if you are still there, you can always submit your testimony to us. Let me just get this email again. To landyuesttestimony@council.nyc.gov. All right. If there are any more members of the public who is to testify regarding the 962-972 Franklin Avenue rezoning proposal remotely or in person, I will stand at ease for 30 seconds. If you want to run to a sergeant-at-arms to submit a speaker's card, or if anyone pops There being no other members of the public who is to... There being no other members of the public who is to testify on LUs 161, 162, and 163 regarding 962-972 Franklin Avenue rezoning proposal, the public hearing is now closed and the item is laid over. Thank you, everyone.